Hammond City Council will not come to order, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
First of all, I want to send special prayers out to the Alexander family, Ramsey Alexander passed, Ms. McCoy passed, as well as Jackie Smith, so three people within my district have passed away since January one. Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you guide us and direct us and give us all the sense of directions to make our city a better place for all the residents of this great city. We ask for all these blessings in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
On behalf of myself and the whole city council, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, just for a point of, of, uh, information, Reverend John Parrish's wife passed away and their funeral was the other day, I believe Saturday, and Reverend Parrish was a councilman for many years, and his wife passed away, so just to mention that too.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich here. Spatelli here. Vanez.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas. Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Oh, and, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, Councilman Jan Kozic, uh, who was the first district councilman from eighty-eight to ninety-two, I believe, his wife passed away and her funeral was also last Thursday. So, let us all remember all of them, all of their prayers.
Okay, the next, uh, order of business could be nominations for president and vice president. Do president first?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
I'd like to nominate Mike Opinker for president, council president.
Second.
Uh, nomination, uh, motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Vanez. Is there any other, um, nominations for president?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Make a motion, nominations be closed.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, nominations be closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations for president are closed. Next, nominations for vice president.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to nominate Councilman Kowinski for vice president.
It's a motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli, to nominate Mark Kowinski for vice president. Any discussion?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Make a motion, the nominations be closed.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henoza, the nominations for vice president be closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's clo- or nominations closed. Clerk Golick, roll call vote for, for president.
It was unanimous.
Alright, well, I thought you had to vote for it, alright. Alright. Be president for another year. Councilman Kowinski, another year also. Thank you, folks. Number three, be reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the December seventeenth, two thousand and twelve meeting.
It's a motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, December twelfth, twenty-twelve, to January ninth, twenty-thirteen, for council meeting, January fourteen, twenty-thirteen. Beginning with claims, (cough) beginning with claims dated one-three thirteen, and ending with claims dated one-nine thirteen. Claim number one through claim number three forty-eight inclusive, for a total of fourteen million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty cents, I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henoza. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have a couple additions. Claim number three forty-nine, American Legion Post, two thirty-two, three hundred dollars donation from Councilman Heniosa. Promotional account, claim number three fifty, Fraternal Order of Police, two hundred dollars from promotional count- Councilman Heniosa. Claim number three fifty-one, Hammond Moose, two hundred seventy-four dollars, seventy-eight cents, from Councilman Heniosa's promotional account. Sons of American Legion Post, two thirty-two, two hundred dollars from Councilman Heniosa's promotional account. Claim number three fifty-three, VFW Post, seven-eight-eight-one, two hundred dollars from Councilman Heniosa's promotional account, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by?
Second.
Councilman Spatelli. On the additions, is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the additions.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. The additions pass, eight, one, absent. None of the claims as written.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, I'm sorry, I wasn't there for caucus, but, um, I, I have a concern about claim number two fifty-one, Hammond Legal Aid Clinic, for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, we eliminated this, uh, department probably about four or five years ago, and they moved out of City Hall, but they kept the name, and I, I have a concern about sending three hundred thousand dollars there because, uh, you know, we're paying salaries of two hundred twenty thousand dollars. We have a law department here with our own department to handle that. Um, we're paying for forty-eight thousand dollars health insurance for people that are not even city employees, they're outside contractors or consultants, and I don't believe it's the policy of the city to go ahead and pay health insurance for other people who aren't even affiliated with the city. We're paying rent, eighteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, I believe, we probably got them a couple of empty offices that we can probably fit them someplace in, um, on Conkey Street, so. That's, I'm sorry, like I said, I wasn't at the caucus to, to bring that out, and the salaries are for two hundred twenty thousand, and I don't believe any one of these four individuals are even living in the city of Hammond. And that would be the reason why, and I know it's, it's the mayor's thing, and I see the mayor standing there and everything, but, um, like I said, I'm sorry I wasn't able to bring it up at caucus.
Mr. President.
Motion to pull, I'll make a motion to pull, I'm sorry.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich to pull claim two fifty-one, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails.
No discussion.
No need to discuss, or?
No.
No.
Can I point out, okay, that's fine.
Okay, Clerk Golick, claims as written.
Claims as amended. Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, eight, zero, one, absent. Number five, public hearing, there is none. Number six, communications. Communications, do we have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I have one, for the Ministry Alliance of Hammond and the Centers of the East, along with the city of Hammond, is requesting all children, young adults from seven to eighteen, who are interested in coming out and participating in the community choir, may do so, and the dates of the next rehearsal is January eighteen, twenty thirteen, at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. And Monday, January twenty-first, twenty thirteen, at six forty-five a.m., beginning at City Hall, fifty-nine twenty-five Columbia Avenue, to the Hammond City Center, with Dr. Martin Luther King, effecting the dream ceremony.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven, committee reports. Any committee reports? No committee reports, committee reports is now closed. Ordinance, third and final reading, there are none. Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance thirteen dash zero one, the petitioners, United Steelworkers, Local Ten-Ten, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as seventy-four-seven grand.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
I'd like to move for first and second reading of, uh, thirteen dash oh-one, to be placed in council as a whole, and intent to consider for one twenty-eight thirteen. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henoza, second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Number ten, resolutions.
Item A, resolution thirteen R dash one, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Move for final passage of thirteen R dash oh-one.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I just request that Clerk Golick read it.
Whereas the common council of the city of Hammond recognizes that there currently exists allegations of impropriety concerning the use of the discretionary gaming funds in the second councilmatic district, and whereas the common council of the city of Hammond wishes to put additional controls in place to monitor and approve the expenditure of second district councilmatic gaming dollars in two thousand thirteen. And whereas the common council, in the interest of accomplishing this goal, wishes that the council finance committee select and approve any projects, contracts, plans, studies, and all appropriations of second district councilmatic gaming funds in two thousand thirteen. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Hammond that the Hammond Common Council now designates the Hammond Finance Committee as the body with the sole power to determine the planning, contracting, distribution, design, encumbering, and expenditure of second district councilmatic gaming dollars in two thousand thirteen only. The president of the Hammond Common Council, in his discretion, may dissolve this resolution should the finance committee no longer be needed in two thousand thirteen to fulfill this function.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich, or Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. This, this resolution came about after, uh, uh, we received a letter from the controller, uh, asking us to look at methods and means of monitoring the gaming dollars for the second district during the course of action of, uh, uh, the action that, uh, Councilman Salinas is go- going through right now. Uh, as the resolution reads, the money will remain, the gaming dollars will remain in the second district for second district benefit, and it will have a, the finance committee of the council, uh, as the viewers, reviewers of the gaming dollars and the expenditures of the gaming dollars. Upon, uh, any point in time where the issues for the councilmen get cleared up, again, the council president has, uh, power to, uh, uh, kill this resolution. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Did they have that letter that they could read, from the controller?
I'll read it as it's stated to myself. Dear President Opinker, as you know, the U.S. Department of the Treasury, upon investigation, has asserted that certain gaming funds be expended by the city of Hammond have been used improperly and illegally. Additionally, the proprietor of Dave Street Service, an approved vendor of the city of Hammond, has disclosed under oath that he has received lucrative contracts for certain monies from the city of Hammond in return for allegedly bribing a city official. In both instances, second district discretionary gaming funds were involved in this melfest, and specifically the authorization of said funds. As your fiscal officer, I would recommend that additional authori- authorization controls be put into place to mitigate the risk of misappropriation and fraud in relation to the above-mentioned funds immediately, and kept in place until such time as the matter has been adjudicated and concluded. Sincerely, Robert Lindy, Hammond City Controller. Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. President, it's, uh, the reality of the situation is, downstate, they're looking at all gaming communities with interest. Um, and I don't think it helps Hammond's case at all, when we go downstate to lobby and to represent our city, that we have a councilman that's alleged to have used that money improperly. So, I think this resolution is a good idea, for what it's worth. I think it's very important, as Councilman Kowinski indicated, that that money stay in the second district, and, and, you know, the finance committee is the appropriate body to make those decisions, so I think this makes the Hammond City Council look responsible. I think it makes the city look responsible, and I hope Councilman Salinas clears this matter up, and I hope he's found innocent of these charges, and we can get back to normal, but in the meantime, I think this is the right thing to do, for what it's worth.
Any other discussion on thirteen R oh-one?
Mr. President.
Chairman.
Councilman Emerson.
Yeah, I would just add to, to what Spatelli said, that, uh, you know, as district councilman, we represent, uh, the whole city, we vote on things for the whole city. And, uh, I also think that this would help to dispel any rumors that may surface, uh, in the, in the near future, and, and about, uh, the councilman, until this, uh, this is settled, you know, in, in, in the courts. So I think it's more, uh, more of a help, uh, to maybe, uh, not punish the councilman, but to help protect him till this is settled, these allegations are dealt with one way or another.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
The resolution says that the planning, contracting, distribution, design, encumbering, and expenditure, what it's saying here is saying the finance committee is doing, I thought that the Board of Works and the Engineering Department and Controller does all that anyway, by putting all of those, um, reports, quarterly reports and so forth, I mean, unless I'm missing something.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I, I understand how that confusion arises, and I think that maybe putting in the, amending in the word review makes that clearer, so that this would read as, "Select and approve any projects, review contracts, plans, studies, and all appropriations of second district councilmatic gaming funds in two thousand thirteen."
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Markovich is correct. Uh, technically, how we do it is, technically, the councilperson picks the projects and works with the Engineering Department, who is the actual body that goes out and hires people. So technically, Councilman Markovich is correct when he says that. Um, I've talked about this with Councilman Kowinski, and we would approach it on our end of the table, as though, in this case, the finance committee were the second district councilperson. And that finance committee says, "Mayor, engineer, we think we should do this project in the second district," and we would treat that committee as the second district councilman when it concerned gaming money. That's how we plan to approach it. So, if this is approved, I would assume that committee is the second district councilperson when it comes to making decisions about how to use that money.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think what the mayor's trying to say is that the committee will be responsible in terms of selecting the projects, and they will make the determination as to what needs to be done in that, uh, district.
So do we have an amendment to the resolution?
Sorry.
Do we have an amendment to the resolution?
I, I, I do believe that just adding the word review takes away the innuendo that they're approving contracts, so I would like to amend in the word review after projects. So it says, "Review contracts, comma, plans, studies, and all appropriations of the second district councilmatic gaming funds." And then I think there's no confusion about...
Where's that at, Councilman?
The third, where- whereas, the second line in the third, whereas, after the word projects, which is, the last word of the sentence is contracts, if we insert review contracts, instead of just go from projects to contracts. Clerk Golick, do you understand what, where that is?
Mr. President.
Yes, are you also gonna put it in the body of the resolution?
Yeah, you have to go down below.
Whereas, will only refer to, you're meant, I would only refer to the whereas. Are you also gonna include it in the body of the resolution?
See.
Or now therefore be it resolved?
Spellt out.
Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
I think the language should be spelled out in the, in the resolution, so that it's clear.
Yeah.
That's the best way to do it.
The planning contract, yes, again, it would go in front of the word, "Review contracting, distribution," review, to determine the planning, review contracting, distribution, design, encumbering, and expenditure of the second district. So after planning, insert the word review, so two, two times the word review gets placed into this as an amendment. Clearly, we don't, we don't do anything with contracts, except that your board, Board of Works approves them.
Okay, could I have an, uh, a motion for the amendment?
I'm, I'm, I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Higgs, to add the word, word review in them two lines. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amendment adding reviews? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. The amendment passes, eight, zero, one, absent.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I, I know the mayor brought up some very good points, that downstate, that they're looking at everybody's gaming money and everything, and all of that, and I'm just wondering maybe if we should make this all districts for the year twenty thirteen, so that everybody will be able to see what districts are being reviewed and so forth and then...
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I think that, that's where, we, we talked about a few different scenarios, and when you're talking about changing the way we do business, that's a whole separate matter. I think, the way, I think Councilman Kowinski and, and the administration approached this is, this is a special situation because of the allegations, and we want the public to be assured that when the gaming money's being used by the district councilman and by the mayor, it's being used properly, and if there's allegations that it's not being used properly, we should do something to fix that. That's where we were coming from. If you want to talk about a wholesale change in the way we do business, I think it should be dealt with in an ordinance, not a resolution. So, if you wanted to do that, Councilman, I mean...
I'm just questioning it.
No, 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 I understand, but this is a resolution on a specific situation.
But, you, like you say, you're well aware downstate, they're gonna be battling for gaming dollars and everything.
There's no doubt in my mind, Councilman Markovich, they're, they're coming after Hammond's gaming money. There's no doubt in my mind. Not just they, there's people in the region who want Hammond's gaming money as well. So, you know, I think everything we could do as a council, and in, and as an administration that shows them that we take it very seriously, that these allegations are out there, I think that makes us look responsible, which is what we need right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I, I believe this is a credible way to, uh, attack this issue. I believe it keeps intact the integrity of the council, the city, the administration, and I, and, and I believe that, uh, the trust of the public, uh, is, is, uh, going to be acquired through this process, not only the city of Hammond, but also downstate and wherever else this story breaks. Thank you.
Okay, Clerk Golick, uh, roll call vote on the, uh, resolution as written.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, resolution passes, eight, zero, one, absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Number eleven, noon and finished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I'd like to bring out twelve dash sixty-three.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, to bring out twelve dash sixty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for an intent to consider on ordinance twelve dash six-three.
Second.
There's a motion, intent to consider, by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the intent to consider.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Just to add the date for the intent to consider for one twenty-eight thirteen. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Intent to consider for twelve dash sixty-three passes, eight, zero, one, absent.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't get a chance to update the council, I wanted to update the council on a couple of things going on right now. Uh, two of them with the library branches, uh, we talked earlier about a rezone that's going through right now, I know Councilman Henoza knows about this, and Councilman Spatelli as well. Uh, we got a union hall from East Chicago that's relocated into Hessville, uh, they're gonna take the old library branch on Grand Avenue, uh, Local Ten-Ten, it's a thriving union, I think Councilman Henoza's a member of that union. Uh, this is quite a catch for the city, uh, we're real happy to take a, a formerly abandoned building and convert it into this use, so that's a real positive thing for Hessville. Uh, regarding the, the old branch on, uh, on Columbia, over by O'Bannon School, we have a, a business that's, uh, wants to locate there, uh, we're working with them right now, Tribal Logic, it's an oil processing firm, I know Councilman, uh, Opinker was talking about it in the paper today, high-paying jobs. And when you hear "oil processing firm," keep in mind that we're talking about vials, they're small, little things of oil, high-paying jobs, it's a company out of Canada that's locating here, and when I say "high-paying," it's like eighty thousand, up to eighty thousand dollar a year job, so this is a real positive benefit that's going into the building on Columbia Avenue. And I know you guys probably heard about it already, but I did want to inform the Hammond City Council that the litigation between Chicago Heights and city Hammond over the water rates, uh, has been settled, has not been reduced to writing yet, we're in the process of doing so, and I want to remind the Hammond City Council that, that, uh, the complaint was filed in the name of, uh, the contract is being signed on behalf of the city of Hammond, so, uh, we're gonna work with the Water Department on the, the revenue distribution, but that's good news for the city of Hammond. Um, we settled at two-twenty, it was already indicated in the newspaper, but next year's gonna be a better year in Hammond, because of some of the work that we're doing, and I appreciate your support on that, so, and as far as our lawyers, uh, they did a great job on behalf of the city, so, I wanted to come up here and update you, I haven't talked to you guys in a while, uh, so we got three good things happening right now, and as I hear more, I'll let you know. right now, and as I hear more, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You want to finish business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
I would like to move to intend to consider twelve sixty-four to one twenty-eight thirteen, and also a letter. Is that a separate? I think that may be a separate motion. So I'll stop with that.
Yeah, do twelve sixty-four first.
So that's my motion.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion on twelve sixty-four? First of all, you're bringing out first and second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second is passed. Okay, now the intent to consider, is there any discussion on twelve sixty-four? And that's to have the date on one twenty-eight of thirteen. Any discussion on the intent to consider? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa. Opinker.
Yes. Twelve sixty-four intent to consider passes eight, zero, one absent, and date set for one twenty-eight of thirteen.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
Since we're on twelve sixty-four, I would like a letter sent to the IH-CDA, the Indiana Housing, in regards to what we're doing with the ordinance, the progress of it.
Okay, it's motion by Councilman Emerson to send a letter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
I move to send ordinance twelve sixty-five back to the Planning Commission with an unfavorable recommendation from this council. I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli to send twelve sixty-five back to Planning and Development. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on sending that ordinance back? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Twelve sixty-five passes by sending it back. Eight, zero, one absent. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Hold on a minute, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I would think if the council wants to disapprove it, you should move to adopt it and then defeat it. Because the statute is kind of loose where it says that the council takes no action in ninety days. I don't know that sending it back would constitute action.
Isn't one of you saying you gotta bring it back?
Make a motion and put it on the floor in the end of the year.
Mr. President, can I kind of explain the statutory authority of that?
Sure.
Okay. As the Planning Commission sends a text amendment, and that's what this is, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, the council does have ninety days to respond to it. However, at your December meeting, you never had first and second reading. So that is a question I think we need to have resolved. That first and second reading didn't occur because it was withdrawn from the agenda. If you take action, one of the, the three actions you can take is either approve it, deny it, or amend it. If you approve it, obviously it's approved. If you deny or amend, it goes back to the Planning Commission for a forty-five day response period. We'll review the denial or amendment, and then send a comment back to you, and then you have forty-five days to take further action. If you're gonna send it back to deny it or to amend it, you have to give the Planning Commission reasons as to why, so we can respond to the reasons. If the Planning Commission agrees with the denial or the modification, then it goes into effect. If the Planning Commission objects to the denial or the modification, when it comes back to the City Council, you would have to vote it down again or vote the amendment back in again.
So we'll just bring it out and vote on the first and second?
That's what we have to do.
Councilman Emerson? We'll bring it out. We'll just vote on the first and second, and we'll deal with it next meeting.
Okay.
Make the motion to bring it out.
All right. I so move to bring out twelve sixty-five for second, first and second reading on the twenty-eighth.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli to, for first and second reading on twelve sixty-five. All is in favor? Opposed? First and second passes.
Clerk has the president's commission, permission to void the last motion that was-
Yes, you do, Clerk Golick.
Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
I would like to revisit discussions at previous council meetings regarding the elimination of the secretary's position in the city council office. On October twenty-second of 2012, the city council voted to eliminate the position of secretary from the council office. On December seventeenth of 2012, the accusation was made that the action taken by the city council was illegal based on information received from the State Board of Accounts. For the record, I would like to state that I spoke with Mr. Pride from the State Board of Accounts. He is supervisor of cities and libraries. I was told by Mr. Pride that our actions were completely legal. We do have the authority to remove the position, a legal action. Our administrative assistant retired as of January third, 2013, and is entitled to payment of accrued sick days and vacation days per the city council, the Hammond City Employee Handbook. And I will read you from the handbook. I have the handbook here. I took the pages out. Retirement or separation value. In most cases, unused sick time is not reimbursable when an employee leaves city employment. However, the city also recognizes the value and contribution made by long-term employees. If an employee leaves city employment and is eligible for retirement, or have worked for the city for at least ten years, and have provided at least thirty days' notice that he or she will be leaving employment, the employee may be reimbursed for sick time as follows. Employees are eligible for retirement benefits subject to the eligibility guidelines determined by the Public Employee Retirement Fund. Employees who have worked for the city for at least ten years of full-time service will be reimbursed at a rate of one day's pay for each four days of unused sick time. Employees who have worked for the city for at least fifteen years of full-time service will be reimbursed at a rate of one day's pay for each two days of unused sick time. Vacation. I'm not going to go through the first vacation for new employees. I'm jumping right to vacation in subsequent years. To be eligible for vacation in subsequent years, an employee must be on the payroll as of January first to be eligible for vacation that year. Vacations are allotted based on the following schedule, and I'm going to jump ahead, completion of the fourteenth anniversary, twenty-five days per calendar year. Per the State Board of Accounts, retirement slash vacation slash sick day policies are home rule or specific to a city or town. Being the policy has been followed in this situation, according to the City of Hammond Employees Handbook, our action was legal. The salary for the secretary's position eliminated was thirty-five thousand, three hundred, nine hundred, thirty-seven dollars. The salary for the administrative assistant position is forty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars. That's a difference of eight thousand, one hundred, thirty-six dollars between the eliminated position and the remaining position. Ms. Debbie Jimenez, who still has a job and is working in our office, her salary will remain thirty-five thousand, nine hundred, thirty-seven dollars. Therefore, we do have the money to pay the vacation slash sick days entitled to the retiring Miss Clapp, totaling approximately six thousand, one hundred, fifty-eight dollars, leaving approximately one thousand, nine hundred, seventy-eight dollars that will remain on that line item until the end of the year. Therefore, our action was legal. The State Board of Accounts is a respected agency, and the insinuations, or accusations actually, of impropriety are a disservice to the residents of the City of Hammond and an insult to this councilwoman. I wanted the residents of the City of Hammond to know, we take our jobs seriously, and we will not take any action that is illegal. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
For those who are interested in being involved in your community and knowing what's going on in your neighborhood, there are some upcoming crime watch meetings. Tuesday, January fifteenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet six-thirty PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Thursday, January seventeenth, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet seven PM at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. The mayor happens to be the guest speaker for that evening. Also on Thursday, January seventeenth, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at seven PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time.
I'd also like to make the announcement, Monday, the twenty-first, is Martin Luther King Day, and there's a march starting at six-thirty at the city hall right here. And I believe we're marching to Civic Center?
Yeah, I read it. Forty-five.
Six forty-five? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Back in December, the mayor and the Eastside Community Council sponsored a toy giveaway at Hammond High that saw over three hundred children. I wanted to acknowledge the many organizations and individuals who made donations and volunteered their time for the event. Just to name a few, donating toys was Hudamaki, Thrift Recycling, the Tim Ford Performance Ranch had a wooden horse there, and the kids were lassoing the horse. They had a lot of fun with that. Larry Mabry took photos of the children with Santa, and also several churches and many individuals too numerous to name volunteered to make this Christmas a little bit more special for three hundred children in need. So thank you to all of them who participated.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spatelli?
I was at that Christmas party, and it's getting bigger and better every year. Great gifts were given out to every kid. Walked out with something in their hands this year, and they got a good program going.
Any other new and unfinished business?
One more, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines?
Nomad Academic and Tutoring is taking a group of Hammond children to the inauguration in Washington, DC. They're going by bus, and we wish them all a safe trip, and I hope that they'll be able to tell us about their experience when they get back in town. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Our first speaker will be Lori Zono.
Good evening and happy and healthy new year to all of you. At the December seventeenth meeting, you voted down ordinance twelve sixty-two, which was a procedure for adopting budgets. That called for a five-day advance notice prior to voting. I have to tell you, I'm delighted that you voted it down. Five days isn't enough time. I sit here, council meeting after council meeting, and I hear groups come to you with budgets and back you into corners and hold the sword of Damocles over your head and say, "If it doesn't happen tonight, something awful's going to happen. We've got a fiscal crisis, the city's going to default, the water will be shut off." Someone once told me that perception is reality, and if you are backed into that corner and people perceive that you're not getting the proper information, that becomes reality. I would ask you to revisit an ordinance like it and put a fourteen-day limit in there. We as a society have become people who say, "What's the last date I can do something?" It's time we started to say, "How soon can I get you the information?" Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next speaker will be Colonel, is it that? Daggett?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of this honorable council. Thank you so much for a moment of your time this evening. I'm Pastor Lieutenant Colonel Antonio Daggett, United States Army Chaplain. I'm here particularly in regards to the situation that's going on in my district. I'm a resident of the Second District, thirty-three Condit Street, Hammond, Indiana. I heard the council do everything within its power this evening to be good stewards in regards to our situation there in the Second District. My concern, without giving us a civics lesson, is that we all know that the essence of our republic is self-representation. During the course of this time, as we are praying for Councilman Salinas and his family, obviously, we need to be concerned with what's going on in the Second District. As a resident, longtime resident of the Second District, I am concerned. I'm concerned that if in fact we are going to move through this transitional period in a conducive and progressive way, we must do that representing the essence of self-representation. We're in a republic. That's what that means. It is not enough for this council to choose a finance committee to review the ongoing situation that will take place as a result of the gaming dollars there in that district. Councilman Markovich made it very clear, which makes a lot of sense. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If that's going to be the policy, then we should do it for all, all of the districts. But I've come to speak specifically on the Second District. And what I'd like this council to consider is possibly establishing an advisory council, an advisory council of three individuals from the Second District to assist the finance review committee as it is dealing with issues that affects the Second District. Who would know better than those of us who live there in the district, what's best for the district? I can't tell you what's best for First District or Third District or Fourth District. I can tell you what's best for Second District because I live there. I'm raising my ten children there. So it's important for me to have some input, and the community to have some input, in the decisions that are going to be made as we move forward. We know how important the gaming dollars are. The mayor is correct. There's a great deal of scrutiny going on in the state as regards to that. And the Second District does not want to- And the second district does not want to get left in the shuffle at this point because of, because of whatever, you know, ultimately will take place within that district. I think there's a constitutional aspect to this as well. As we live in a republic of self-representation, we must consider that those members who live in this district, in fact, have say always. And Council Salinas obviously is our current representative. He's the one that speaks on our behalf currently. But until whatever transition or until the changes or whatever is going on, whatever, until, until that is, uh, finished, we must not lose our say, our representation as a second district. So I want this council to seriously consider the constitutional question of self-representation, number one. And number two, to possibly consider at least three current members of the district to make up an advisory board that we can advise this council on various projects and, 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 and various, uh, events and aspects that are going on within that district. We always should maintain a commitment to self-representation. And I think those of us who live in the district that have various backgrounds, myself, for example, m, many of our people in the district have enormous backgrounds, different backgrounds. I happen to be, uh, a, a former IS, IRS agent. I have an accounting background, a strong accounting background. I believe I could assist in some way. Uh, we have, uh, Pastor Gumass who lives there, strong background in counseling and working with the community there. So I think it, I think it would behoove this council to consider the constitutional question of self-representation and make sure that we've covered that aspect of this. So I want to encourage this council to consider, uh, amending or adopting to its resolution, uh, possibly an advisory council of three individuals, current residents of second district, yet that can then sit and assist this finance or fiscal review committee in making decisions for the second district until such time as, um, the current situation alleviates itself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Colonel. Mr. George Stoya?
Very briefly, uh, after twelve years of bitter recession, after ten years of budget, uh, quote, budget reform in the state of Indiana and all the socioeconomic challenges that that has induced, caused, that we've had to confront, we've had a six percent drop in crime. That's all I want to say.
Oh, wow.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Higgs. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, media adjourned.